All right, we're going to get rolling here. Okay, we're going to get all the side conversations stopped. I'm sorry. We're a minute late. So we are going to get the February 25th work session started here. And we just have a couple of things on this particular agenda. So the first thing we need to do is adopt the agenda, and so I will take that motion now.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt our work session agenda. Is there any questions or comments regarding it? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we will move into the two agenda items. 2.01, this is a discussion that we want to have about possibly adding a work session each month to go over some of the bigger topics that we are dealing with here as a school district. So for each board member, just to give you the background on this, and then please feel free to weigh in. At the board leadership meeting, Dr. Buck, Board Member Fritchy and I, we discussed the possibility of adding a work session essentially on the first Thursday or kind of that mid-point between meetings on a Thursday to tackle any of the really big topics that are coming up in either an upcoming regular meeting or possibly even the following month, just so that board members have a little bit more time to digest the information. It might also give us a chance to present more information to the public so that they're not getting it essentially on the same night that we are trying to also then make a decision. That's kind of where the genesis of this is. It would certainly be possible that we might have a month where we don't need to have an extra work session, but then that could be communicated by staff to, excuse me, to all of us. And so we would essentially just hold that time in our calendars to make sure that we are available each month should we need to have that extra work session. So this is kind of a chance to, if you have questions about what we might be talking about with those work sessions, or if we, if you have some comments related to it, this is the time that you can voice that. Board Member Doan.
We have been talking about doing this for many years. So I'm really, I think this is a great opportunity for us to get more information and be able to digest it. So I think it's awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Board Member Marshall?
I concur with the comments that Board Member Doan just made. I think that over-communication is a good thing, especially with being transparent with the community. And it does give the board members, gives us a chance to digest the information a lot more in detail. And I think that that would also benefit the administrative staff too, to get an idea of kind of what we're thinking and where we're kind of headed to help them better prepare on which direction they should go when doing what they have to do. So even if the meetings are, you know, via Zoom or something like that, I think that that's a great idea with a lot of the big projects we have going on coming up. And then still, of course, dealing with the residual and ongoing things with the pandemic. So I think it's a great idea that we should do.
Appreciate those comments. Board Member Fritchy?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that, of course, you know, when we had this discussion among Dr. Buck and President Murdoch and I, we said, there may be months that we really don't need, as you said, to have a meeting. And we certainly don't want to have to, you know, have our administrators working another night of the month if they don't need to be doing that. So we'll just, as we plan our agendas and we see what's coming forward, we can kind of line that out so we'll know for sure, you know, when we need to. And if we don't have enough material or enough to discuss on that first Thursday of the month, then we don't have a meeting. So I agree with the comments that the other board members have also made. It is great for transparency. It is great for gathering information, more information, and a better chance for us to digest that, ask lots of good questions, and make sure that we feel like we're on good solid track when we make those decisions.
I do want to just comment that I know that Board Member Campbell is in support of this as well. This is one of the items that she had also just kind of asked us to have a discussion about, is this possibility of the bi-weekly work sessions? So until she's able to get to this, I just want people to know that she was in support of this. Also note that kind of going hand-in-hand with this is to develop that long-range work session plan that we do get so that we can see what's coming up over the course of the entire year, if possible. And then to give board members any chance, or maybe a little bit more time if you have a work session on that first Thursday. You may not be voting on that topic even in two weeks. It may be the following month. So just kind of know that there may be some of those items where there's going to be even more lead time so that any questions that we have get answered, even probably at the following regular meeting, then you're not voting until the next month. So just to make sure that all of those things are discussed prior to. Any other comments related to this particular item on the bi-weekly work sessions? If it's the will of the board and it kind of seems like that, we'll kind of start fleshing that out on how that will look, you know, coming up here into the future as we progress through the rest of this school year and then start the summer. It would also be something that could be addressed at the summer work session as well in terms of topics and stuff like that that could be addressed. So just know that that would be coming up as well. Board Member Allen?
I, without much negative input, I guess, or whatever, critical feedback, you know, the sooner the better. There's, you know, everything continues to rock and roll quickly. New faces will be in this building soon. I, I mean, next fall's fine if that's the best time, and maybe that's the best start, or summer, and yeah, let's roll.
Well, and you probably have gotten the notice that we already are kind of pushing into that by next Thursday coming forward with insurance. So we are moving forward with light speed. So, okay, so just kind of, but yes, I agree with you. We can get started as soon as possible. Any other comments? Okay, I appreciate the discussion on that one. 2.02 is going to be looking at a lot of data. And you do have some handouts that Dr. Barger will also be able to walk us through as well. And so we will turn over, looking at our data through an equity lens, to Dr. Barger.
Thank you. Good evening. So we absolutely know that a pivotal part of equity work is also a reflection on the progress of that work, but also a reflection on our data that calls for action as it relates for continued work. And so what we're going to do is we're going to look at various components of LSR7 data, specifically through the lens of various demographics so that we can continue to consider what our data looks like through an equity lens. The data that we're going to take a look at tonight specifically includes student discipline data, including a view by consequences and a view by infractions, a review of grades, specifically Ds and Fs, a review of career pathway opportunities, including graduate follow-up surveys, market value asset data, CTE concentrator data, a review of our advanced coursework and gifted data, including AP, IB, dual credit and gifted, a review of our growth from fall to winter on our NWEA data, as well as a sneak peek at our social and emotional belonging data, as well through Panorama. So what isn't in that list is our MAP EOC ACT data, largely because of the impact of the pandemic last spring. We've always used that to measure our gap, so we're needing to look at different data as a way of measurement. And this will not be part of this evening's presentation as a result. One of the things I think is really important for us to begin is for us to remind ourselves that this particular framework, which was shared with our teachers in August through Dr. Cobb and Dr. Conapple's work about belonging through dignity, is really the way that we want to think about equity. Equity really being that includes the quadrant in the upper right where we provide not only high access to opportunities, programs and services, but we do so with unconditional belonging. And I think thinking through moving our students into that quadrant where access doesn't have to be exchanged for belonging, belonging doesn't have to be exchanged for access, is an important part of this particular conversation. In addition to that, stop right here and do a quick reference to the caution being the ladder of inference. So it would be possible to experience and observe or think things, to pick some data from this data set, to add meeting to that data, whether that meeting belongs there or not, make some assumptions, draw conclusions, adopt some beliefs. We should warn ourselves to not do that. What we need to do is to look at the data and reflect on the data and let the data tell us the story as opposed to adding our own inference. There will be two potential ways that you can look at some of this data. I encourage just to strongly look at this data as it reflects on how our systems may be serving specific groups of students, not as it reflects on the individual or groups of students themselves. So a tool for you all is your blue handy-dandy blue sheet, which we're going to be referencing here quite a bit. One of the ways, and one of the most important ways to make analysis when we're looking at equity is to make the determination is whether or not we have proportionate representation in various ways. So if we have 15.5% of our enrollment being black students, then 15.5% of our enrollment in various programs should be represented by black students. We have some data that is secondary school student data only, and we have some data that is. And so what. The enrollment. Being that. Eight, seven. We know when we're looking. Reference. Is. We'll start by. Good student discipline with. For what, what. How did we code? Now. Doing is we are going. Day 12 data. Looking at those numbers. Person. What we see here. And four hours. Attributed between. Seventeen, eighteen. You can see. And. The tall blue bar is white. The lighter blue. Of the things that is. If you look to. Is, that would. But what we. Since twenty. Are represented by. And fifty-eight. One hour. Comparison to that set. This is the way we're going to. Is the distribution. To the enrollment of. Move to the four-hour. Pattern. Thirty-one percent. Five percent. In nineteen. Black students. Of things, including. Those consequences. The school suspension. A rate of. Of our in-school. Incidents, not. And it is not. Not 2% of our. With black students. To. Percent of enrollment. That fifty-five point. With white students. For that demographic. Of school suspensions. There can be an. Building level. A referral with. Suspension that is longer. And for a hearing. In terms of disproportionate. Next group, I. Bottom right, this. Hundred and five. Look at our trends, we. And we need to be, students could. Drastically. Analysis, and we. And reduce lunch status. Free and reduced lunch status. When you look at our. Of our one-hours. Hours. When you. That they account for. Suspension. Of our out-of-school. Entering. And again, we. But you can see that the. And a fifty. This to the question. Essentially, what did? To those consequences. More complex. Be more clear, it's. Because it is. But in. The K. Infraction that is. You. Infraction. And again, I know any one of us could probably spend hours with those documents thinking from the perspective of what we're wanting to look for. I would encourage you to hold on to that ladder of inference and remember that we're talking about how our systems may or not be serving our students, not how our students may be feeling within the system. So we can hold on to those and spend more time with that too. But we also then want to shift a little out of discipline and take a look at academics and grades. This, we will be looking at grades seven through 12 as only secondary schools give Ds and Fs from a credit earning and assignment of grades. Our elementary schools use the MPE. So because we will be using only the secondary schools, you'll want to use the bottom two boxes on your blue chart as your point of reference. When we take a look at the Ds and Fs for first and second semesters combined, okay, off to the right, essentially I have the blue version for you up there to make that easier. You can see that we have relatively consistent data from 2015, 16 to 2019, 20, indicating that we have in between 61, 62 into 63% of our Ds and Fs attributed to students who are white, despite 73% of our population being white. We have 22, 23, up to 24, quite a while ago, percent of the Ds and Fs coming from our black student population, despite the fact that at the secondary level, our black population is at that 13.2%. When we look at the same data, 712 from Free and Reduced Lunch, we can see that we have 34, 35, 39% of our Ds and Fs coming from a free and reduced population that represents 19.4% of our student body. And when we look at our students with IEPs, we can see that our Ds and Fs account for about 14 to 16% of our Ds and Fs in a IEP at the secondary level, sitting between nine, nine being the closest we could get knowing we were working on some data there, percent enrollment at that secondary level. When we look by gender, we can see that it's a 51, it's about 50/50, but 51.2% of our students are males. And yet you can see that Ds and Fs are in the 60s at least for our male students. So now there is this year, right? And we know this year doesn't belong on these charts because this year is like its own year. It gets its own slide, right? So when we look at the Ds and Fs from this year, please know that I had to exclude quarter-only grades so that we didn't get duplication in here. And so some of those middle school elective grades that are quarter-only may not be reflected here. But big picture should give us the same snapshot. You can see that the fall 2020 semester, Ds and Fs by race, 62% of our Ds and Fs were white, 21% were black, 10% were multiracial. You can see 58% of them were earned by male students, 28% of them were earned by students categorized as free or reduced lunch, and 12% of them were earned by students with IEPs.
Kristi, excuse me, Dr. Barger. Is that, when you, when you say of the Ds and Fs, could that be multiple Ds and Fs by the same student?
It is individual grades earned, yes. So if a student, these are not students. So if a student earned six, then they would be, they would be six of the rows, but they're also in the included six in the denominator.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, good question. So then.
Dr. Barger, just a second. I think Board Member Allen has a question.
Dr. Barger, thank you. So this is 2020 pandemic, right? That's the idea here. Do we have anything side-by-side with typical numbers? I mean.
Yeah, and that's what this would be. So here, like if we're looking back to Ds and Fs, now again, this is first and second semester combined. Obviously, we aren't through second semester yet, right? But so we can see that we were at about, last year, we were at 61.6% white and 22.8% black, with 8.5% being multiracial. And then if we went to this slide, we're at 62, 21, and 10.
I mean, I've got to jot the numbers down or look at the slowly side-by-side to see if there's a big difference with the pandemic years versus, so when you say last year, last year is going to be what year?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? Nineteen, 20 versus?
Honestly, we can do a quick snapshot here. So really, 1920 was at about 62% white.
Right.
And this year was 62% white. Last year's Ds and Fs were 22.8% black. This semester, we were at 21%. Multiracial may be different. Let's take a look here. Multiracial was 8.5% last year. It's up a little because it was 10, I think.
So not a big difference.
Not drastically, correct.
And we'll see what spring of '21 holds, right? Winter and spring?
Correct.
All right, interesting.
It would just be the spring because we're looking at semester grades.
Right, interesting numbers. Now, for spring of '20, right, a year ago at this time, we froze grades in March.
Correct.
So.
But we could also look, if you look back here, there isn't a drastic difference in terms of breakdown. Now, we may have had less Ds and Fs in totality, but percentage breakdown, of course, across our demographics. This is five years' worth of data, and it's been very consistent in terms of the percent breakdown across the demographics.
Okay. I mean, I would have thought this fall, the numbers would have been larger, right, for everyone.
Well, I will tell you, the numbers, the end, the total number is up.
Okay.
What we're not seeing is that there is an increased or decreased proportionality in terms of.
Ratios are the same. Okay, ratios are the same, okay. So delivery then is the same, I mean, output from delivery is the same.
I would say impact of being a member of a demographic is the same.
Okay.
Yep. When we think about how we're serving.
Dr. Barger, I'm going to cut you off again, and I'm so sorry. Board Member Marshall, did you want to go ahead and ask your question? Okay.
Well, I'm switching to Career Technical, so please feel free.
You can go ahead.
Yes, thank you. The question I had, so for the Ds and Fs for fall 2020, for seven through 12, moving forward for grade seven through 12, since they're the only part that get, receive Ds and Fs, is there a way, or what is the way, to overlay over that data? What percentage of those students were online versus in-person to compare that?
Yep, absolutely. I can get that. I don't have it here, but we absolutely, what we do to get this is we have student ID number and we run it against demographics. So we certainly can get that for the quality if you'd like to see.
Right, yeah, that'd be great.
And I think, we'll have to see how it plays out. I could probably also do that with an intersection so that not only do we know online versus in-person, but then we can look at these demographics within the two groups either.
Yes, yes, yep.
Yep, thank you. You bet.
Board, Board Member Allen?
Sorry, again, are you, do you want questions at the end? Or, I mean, is this sort of number three? I mean, is number three a left turn and very different from where we were?
Number three is a left turn into how we're serving our students with regard to post-secondary experiences and experiences in high school. So if we want to talk about grades, certainly this is the spot.
Well, this is one, I mean, what I'm interested in is, so we have, is there, I don't know if it's empirical, I don't know if it's data-driven, I'm not quite sure. Do we utilize an overlap, right, we put some time and effort and money into Panorama? Do we use that feedback at all to figure out how the, you know, what is driving action either for, you know, infractions or grades or?
The panorama is, I've lost track of my numbers, maybe six or seven on my, that we're on number three now. However, yes and no. So certainly panorama gives us a very clear breakdown in terms of sense of belonging, cultural awareness, collectively by demographics. So we'll say our white students are communicating this in terms of their sentiments, or black students are communicating this in terms of their sentiments. What it doesn't give us is that ability to say, Kristi Barger responded this way on Panorama, and she has this number of Ds in. I mean, to some degree, it does, does on our dashboard, but not in a like, report from an aggregate analysis kind of way.
So then, in, in that way, then, we've also talked about NWEA, right? And how that can drill down to the individual student. I mean, well, that then kind of interfaced then more with the grade issue.
And that will be in here as well. We've got NWEA data specifically looking at growth data. So regardless of where they're starting, we can find out how well we're growing students within each demographic as well.
If I can interject, can we have Dr. Hill to come up for a second? I know she's not prepared to speak, so, sorry, Dr. Hill. One of the things we have piloted and are diving deeper into is that triangulation of data of belonging with grades, with discipline. And so Dr. Hill can talk about, some buildings actually started piloting it last spring, right before the pandemic hit. And then we've done more work in that this year, and eventually we want everyone flying high on this. So it helps kind of find our, not only our grade, but behavior interventions combined.
Thank you for the question. There are three schools, one at each grade level. Lee Summit High School, Bernard Campbell Middle School, and Richardson Elementary that are piloting what's called student success. And all of the data, or most of the data that Dr. Barger is talking about is presented in a dashboard way for each building so that they can quickly see academics, attendance, behavior, and SEL. The hope is that we are building this dashboard, and they are helping us work through trials and tribulations so that every school can have that dashboard to answer that question of triangulating the data on a regular basis.
And that will be done at the system level-wise, but it's also done at the, each individual kid level-wise. So, which informs them based on them what they're going to do intervention-wise.
Sorry, dominating here, is this, I mean, I don't remember receiving quite this much granular information in the past. Now, it's only my second year. Is this sort of our first iteration, 101, or we're 2.1?
Um, I don't know that I would say it's first iteration in that, in that it kind of is what it is in terms of product. However, we, we have looked probably more anecdotally. We have done some studies. In fact, I think about five years ago, maybe a little bit longer either. A previous administrator spent a pretty good amount of time doing a deep dig into some of these demographics. But what we know is that the equity plan calls for work and reflection to be data-driven. And as part of the implementation of that plan, this work is probably new to being shared this publicly because it is driven by our commitment to that plan.
All right, I, I mean, I can, I have a number of questions, and that's fine. I just, I am, I hope that's fine, sorry. But we say, you know, basically, our student success, student enrollment should be reflected throughout. Sometimes there's going to be variance. Do we know what a common variance would be, or why that would be? I mean, it's, the data, the numbers are one thing. Then you have panorama, which is emotional, social, belonging, safety, security, you know, all of. All of, so then, grades move up as the student feels stronger, better, safer, connected. I mean, it'll be interesting to see how these merge over time, I guess is my point. Because there's also that soft, to me anyway, the soft part of it. Economics are a driver. Single parents have to be a driver. Two parents working, grandparents at home have to be a driver. I mean, to me, so many things are a driver in the outcomes that hopefully we can bring the numbers stronger for everybody. But some of these are out of our control, I would think. And that's my question. Are some of these conditions out of our control?
I would say it's our job to ensure that there's not predictability of success or failure in our system based on what demographic is walking in the door. So regardless of what circumstances are outside of our control, it is our job to ensure student success and to minimize, which means there may be more scaffolds and supports in places where they're needed. But I do believe that if we truly want to prepare each student for success in life, regardless of what they walk in the door with, we give them the scaffolding they need. And do we know that all S R seven is not the only place that these sorts of gaps exist? Because we know that there are systemic issues and barriers that are societal, not just organizational. But we, as an organization, will commit to do everything we can to minimize that in our space.
Well, I've talked about this issue. Some legislators saying, not, hopefully a total left turn here, but food scarcity, sleep deprivation, couch surfing. I mean, all of those, when you say scaffolding around the student, that is a fantastic image, and I think something that our district can provide and has an obligation to do. And I think, I don't know what your quote was, but it was something like, how the system is serving the students to its highest and best, you know, output or whatever. So not just how the student is navigating, hopefully putting the supports around the student so the system serves each student for what that student needs.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Board Member, sorry. I just keep cutting you off. Board Member Hedrick?
Thank you. I just had a real quick question. In terms of the number of courses, is there, or have you done any analysis in terms of, is there a great deal of variance in the total number of courses that have been included for this analysis? I'm thinking about, you know, our part-time students or students who attend other programs, how that might, or how that's impacted in these numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. Just so that you know what we polled, we truly did a poll out of Power School of any semester DNF regardless of what course it was associated with.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. All right, we're going to move to number three, quick. We're going to talk a little bit about career technical, career technical education and as part of our pathway to serving our students. So when we talk about which of the following best describes your plan for advanced training or education, this is the follow-up survey that happens a little less than a year after graduation. And you can see that overall, and this is sort of our anchor spot, it's kind of the blue sheet for these next slides, if you will. You can see that overall, in 2020, the graduate follow-up survey had 44.8% of our students going to a four-year college, 13.3% going to a two-year college, 20.2% entering the workforce, 4.2% entering the military. So you can kind of see what the breakdown was of all of our students, yes.
And I'll add in, if you notice, that's 58% of our kids went to college last year, that graduated last year. So this is 180-day follow-up. 58% is much lower than our historical trend, but the pandemic definitely played into this data. That's why you see other 14.4%. I don't think our historical data has shown a number that high, but the pandemic definitely has played into this. So 180 days after graduate, so December, we get clearing houses from colleges, and the counselors beat the bushes to find out what kids are doing that are not in there. So thank you for everybody. It's a lot of hard work to put this together, but it's definitely a different dataset than a normal follow-up.
Yep, and much credit to Shannon Booth who coordinates this. This is really her data. So as a point of reference, and again, we could do this over multi-years, but there's a lot here, and it started to be a lot. So we're looking for snapshot data that's representative. When we talk about which best describes your plan for advanced training or education, you can see that our graduates last year, we had 37% of our males say that they were going to a four-year college as opposed to 53% of our females, and 11% of our males saying they were going to a two-year college as opposed to 16% of our females. When you look, for example, at military, 7% male, 2% female. Workforce, 25% male, 14% female. So you can see a little bit of demographic breakdown by gender. When you look by race, this is really the best way to do it, is to put the pie charts all next to each other. You can see the breakdown by race, how that pie fills out for each individual race. I'll let you take a look at that. So I think this is a point of celebration tonight. One of the preconceived notions might be that we have students who believe, or students perhaps in certain demographics, for whom there is perception that students might not be holding them accountable to high standards. And so in the question, in the survey, one of the questions that we asked of these seniors or recent graduates is, "The majority of my teachers held students to high standards and required quality work." First of all, look at how high those numbers are. Obviously Hispanic, we've got some work to do. But you can see that those numbers are very high, and interestingly, don't necessarily match the disproportionate statistics of some of the grades. So it appears that our students believe that their teachers were holding them accountable for rigorous work. A market value asset is part of our real-world learning approach with Kaufman Foundation. And in order to receive a market value asset, a student has to have one of the following things: an internship of 120 hours with 60 on-site hours, a client-connected project, nine-plus college credits, an industry-recognized credential, or an entrepreneurial experience. This is of all the MVAs earned, not of all the students who earned an MVA. So just to be clear, this is a full count of MVAs, not students, okay? You can see the distribution over the last two years, and you can see that we are down a little 2020 in terms of MVAs earned from the prior year. But you can see that the majority of our MVAs by far are being earned by our white students. And again, if you can think back to that blue sheet in terms of proportional representation, this is another place to take note. If we look at the same data as it relates to our free and reduced lunch status, you can see that we have very few of our free, of our MVAs being earned by our free and reduced lunch students.
Board Member Fritchie?
Yeah, what's the barriers to that?
I think there are probably some barriers. And again, this is hypothesis, but I think there are transportation barriers. I think there may be work obligation barriers, or maybe credit barriers. You know, there are probably a number of barriers to that, but I would be hypothesizing there.
I was just wondering if our, if our students, our students who are on free and reduced lunch are taking advantage of Innovation Track that we have provided for them to get college credit.
So I have that data, but I don't have it in my mind right now, Dr. Buck. Do you know the answer to that?
It's, I can tell you, every single year Innovation Track's been open. It's actually a pretty small number. It's like 70-something students.
That's what I thought.
When we continue in this area of career technical education, this is essentially a look at not only how somebody who might be all the way to the point of having a market value asset, which is sort of an, at the end of the road, I have something correct, but how we look at those who, students we would consider concentrators. These columns list obviously race and ethnicity. And then it would say, okay, did this student take less than one credit in a career technical education field? Did a student take one or two credits? Did they take three or more, or two or more? There was a shift in what the state called a concentrator. And then, did they take it three or more in a one particular year? So you can see the level of intensity of participation in our career technical courses. And these are actually raw numbers, so you can see the actual number of participants in these, or actual number of concentrators and/or individuals taking those courses. When we look similarly at this data by other demographics, you can see the individuals who are taking CTE coursework by IEP and by gender. So in addition to the CTE work, we know that one of the key components of equity is to ensuring that we have all demographics achieving at their highest potential by encouraging them into advanced coursework and supporting their acceptance into gifted for those who are truly gifted. And so here is a look at the data as it relates to IB, AP, and dual credit by race. So the question is important. What percentage of students that had an IB course are in each group? So this is of the kids who had an IB course. How did that break out? And the same with AP, and the same with dual credit. Again, keep in mind, these would be secondary students, so you would be anchoring that to the bottom of your blue chart. So we would have 73% of our students being white, and we're sitting there, you know, 74%, 79%, 77%. So this seems to be a place where there has been some places of progress, although you look at like AP, again, AP though is not a huge amount of course offerings for us. It's a relatively small number.
Yeah, I was going to add that AP is a much smaller N than the other two for us. This is also, I want to point out, this has this year's data, which the vast majority of things you've seen so far has not had this year's data. So this is one of the spots you can see. And we probably should bring in information on EOC for them, or, you know?
EOS?
EOS, I'm sorry, I said C test.
And EOS really honestly, well, it'll reflect this, it'll reflect it visually, but it will also show how that compares to their majority group. So we can get, we can get that as well.
But that's their whole focus, is to help us out with this area, and they've done a good job with their high schools.
When we talk about IB, AP, dual credit by other demographic, you can see that I'm asking the same question because the question's important when we're looking at our data. You can see that this is a place where we might be able to increase our success. When we look at gifted, and I know gifted has been something that has been a topic of conversation with me for the past few years and with Dr. Wright for this year, and is a very specific topic of work this year. And there's going to be some updates provided to you in Board Update as it relates to gifted work that is happening within that department. But we do know, and we have known, that our representation in our CASICS gifted program is not where it needs to be. There has been some very strategic work happening with Dr. Wright, Dr. Buck, and Desi to work on identification strategies that might better us in this area. But you can also see how that is reflected in our twice-exceptional. It would be, we should see higher IEP numbers in our gifted data as well because of twice-exceptionally gifted students. So there is work to do, but the great news is, the work is in great hands, and it is happening. So then that allows us to shift to the question of growth. When we're talking about gaps, or we're talking about distance between demographics or predictability of student success, we know that one of the things that's going to have to happen in order to close an achievement gap is that one group's going to have to grow faster than the other, correct? We want every, every group growing, and every group growing, but we also know that we have to be able to catch up with the growth. So when we look at NWEA, so I'm going to give you the reminder, the 30-second reminder on NWEA is this. Kids take it in the fall, winter, and spring. When an individual student takes it, they receive a RIT score, which is like an inch, right? It's their measurement. There is a statistically predicted measure of growth. So it will say, Kim Fritchie earned this in the fall. Her growth between fall and winter should be X. And Ryan got this in the fall, and his growth between fall and winter should be Y. And they could be in the same classroom and have a different X and a Y because the growth is designated about where they started. So what this data asks is, when we look at our students this year, we just finished our window, from fall to winter, as it is broken not by grade level and race, how, what percentage of our students met their individual growth goal? So these could be our highest flyers that didn't grow at all. They're not going to be on this. Our lowest, most struggling academic students who grew a whole bunch, they're going to be represented here. But you can see how that growth is represented in math. This is math here. Now, there's no need to look at your blue chart here. Our goal would be that all of this would be 100% every box, right? Because we would want all of our kids to hit that mark. Okay? When we look at reading, same concept. That then brings us to the social, emotional, and the belonging, the panorama that we were discussing earlier. Because we know that all of these things are interwoven. Student success, social, emotional, belonging. It's again, that wraparound effort that we're trying to do to ensure that our students have what they need. So when we think about Panorama, we give a fall survey and we give a winter survey. I use the fall survey for a reason. The fall survey is the only timefall and spring where we use the culture and diversity and equity component of the survey. And so since we didn't have that in winter, I wanted to stay consistent with my grouping, okay? When we look at social and emotional learning from grades three through five, and social and emotional learning in grades six through 12, so that's the left chart of the right chart, you can see that there are the categories of growth mindset, self-efficacy, self-management, and social awareness. They go up, right? And you can see that the gray, 58, 65, 80, 78, or on the other side, 57, 46, 77, 70, that's how all, those are favorable responses from our whole student body. So 58% of all of our students had favorable results for a growth mindset. 3.5. 65% of the 3.5 students had favorable results for self-efficacy, okay? When you work your way down, you see the demographic breakdown by race. And when you see a green and a plus, that's the percentage points higher that that particular demographic. So for example, Asian students had 84% in self-management, four higher than the 80, right? Black students had 74% in the self-management, six lower than the 80. So you can see the distribution as it breaks down in terms of responses by race. Again, 3.5 on the left, 6.12 on the right. This is the social and emotional component. Growth mindset, self-efficacy, self-management, and social awareness. We also have this by, top batch is free and reduced lunch. Bottom is special education, same categories. And you can see, free and reduced lunch is orange-red all the way across. S is special education. When we talk about the Climate Equity and Diversity Survey, we only give that in grades six through 12. This particular, you'll see that the top categories change. They changed to cultural awareness and action, diversity and inclusion, school safety, and sense of belonging. And you can see what our total count was in grades six through 12 as well as the percent of favorable responses. And you can also see where those greens are, where there was positivity in terms of higher-than-average amongst their peers response to those categories. And you can see again, that hotter orange where there was a less favorable percentage by our student population. So these pieces are all interconnected, even though they're very separate. We need to think of them collectively. This is our free and reduced lunch and our special education, with free and reduced lunch being on the left and special education being on the right as it relates to Climate Equity Survey. So that wraps up our data sharing. I will share with you that we know that we are coming up on time for our report to come to you in written report as it is regard to an update to the Equity Plan, and that's coming as in the format that it would normally come. But really, the purpose of today was this. We are committed to this work because the data that we just saw tells us that our students need us to be committed to this work. And it will give us a measurable way to measure our outcomes. Now, that being said, is one year with the Equity Plan going to make drastic? I mean, we hope to make incremental change, right? This is long-haul work in terms of changing this data, but we are absolutely committed to changing most of it. So if you all have questions that we haven't asked, I would be happy to answer them, or thoughts and reflections.
I do have a question that I would like to ask-
I, I do have a question that I would like to ask in relation to the NWVA results that you gave us in terms of growth. And it's more of an overarching question, starting with the math slide that you showed us. Because ultimately, among all of our demographics, we had relatively consistent growth among all of those groups, whether they are doing well academically or not. We, we have relatively consistent growth. So my question is, how do we reconcile growth versus grades, right? Because ultimately, school, education is about learning rather than a D or an F or an A or a B. So in this particular slide, and it's true of the, of the next one as well, you know, relatively consistent, where we have a percentage of kids who are clearly growing, right? They're clearly learning. But we don't know if that's reflected in the grades that they're receiving. So how do we reconcile? And I know that that's a discussion going on across the country. I'm not trying to say that it's just us, right?
It's like, oh, the grading conversation. Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, but how do we reconcile that? Because I mean, we, we want to show growth, which we're showing in here, and we want those percentages to be higher. I understand that too. But how do we reconcile that and continue to communicate the growth versus grade kind of conversation?
I think the first thing that we do is that we celebrate the growth. And, and Dr. Wright has done great work with our building administrators in terms of how we find places to communicate with parents about success. I think the reality that you're talking about, why is there the discrepancy? Well, I think, you know, if a growth is coming from a kiddo who is still, you know, eighth grade and maybe showing growth, but is, as much as we might not love it, not turning in homework and/or is struggling on tests in terms of an academic bar, because they are so far behind, that might be more reflective in society's current grading structure about grades than, than mastery. That being said, when we think about our elementaries shift a few years ago to standards-based mastery and using that MPE, I think that's a much closer approach to that. And obviously, from a secondary perspective, you know, that would be ideal nationwide. There are obviously also lots of external barriers that prevent some of that thinking as well.
I appreciate, I appreciate that answer. My other, my other question on this would be, because we have so much different data that we're able to look at here, is there a way for us to know what those percentages are based on kids participating in school activities? Whether it be in clubs, sports, it would, it fair, I mean.
That's tough.
Because we know that link, but I, I agree. I'm just curious if we.
One of the things that's tough, and we're working on it, there has been a charge by Dr. Buck, and I certainly can defer, if Don can give me the like holler at me if he needs to come answer differently. But Dr. Buck has charged us with finding a way to keep track of that. Now, certainly, we have mission, physicals and things like that. But when you talk about involvement, for example, in an art club, like what constitute involvement? Do we keep rosters? Do we know who they are? Is it tagged? So that's a data collection piece that is quite honestly difficult to manage. We're committed to trying to work on it, but it would be difficult to cross-reference because honestly, we don't have a great understanding of who those kids are.
That's totally fair. And then my last question for today would be, you gave us the enrollment percentages for 2021. Could you also, just even if it's put it back in board docs, give the percentages for 1920, since that's where our data comes from on a lot of those slides?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I really went back and forth on trying to make this easy for you as point of reference versus having, you know, five boxes. But I will be happy to do that, both from then all student and then also at the secondary level.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. It was a very good presentation. Board member Marshall?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Berger, for the immense amount of, of data. My questions stem from the, the slides about the graduation surveys or post-graduation surveys. I've seen some of the, the questions on the surveys through my daughter that was taking it. And my question is, does this type of survey or something similar to it, does it happen maybe midway through the high school year? Because questions such as, you know, do they feel like they're being held to a cer, to a high standard? Those are valuable questions that could be asked throughout their high school journey to kind of, to course correct along the way, instead of finding out, you know, the results after they've gone on and graduated, when we could have mitigated some things, you know, improved a lot of things for them. And the other question is, out of the students, what's the percentage of the students that, that take the survey compared to those that do not?
Oh, do I have an in on here? Let's look. I may not. I would have to get back to that with Shannon would probably be able to tell you that immediately, but I, I would be able to, oh, you're here, Shannon. You can tell me that. Do you know the percent?
I do. We hit at least 95% of our graduates every single year that follow up on the survey. So the numbers that are coming forward in the survey is actually 100% of what we found out from the results. So anyone that we didn't get a hold of is going to fall in that other category because we don't know what they're doing. So it is 100% of our graduates that are coming forward, but we usually hear from at least 95% of them every year.
Okay, that was another question I had. What makes up that other category? The last question I had was in regards to, was slide 27, where it talks about the plans for advanced training and education. Do we dig deeper into that survey and the questions to find out what the driving force between the student making that decision on what they plan to do after high school?
There are quite a few questions. And again, you know, Shannon could probably speak to it in more detail or provide it, and you may actually see a little bit of it in, in, in tonight's board meeting with her report. But there are a lot of questions that describe the school experience. I'm not sure, and again, Shannon, speak to it if you're different, if it's different, that there's necessarily one that says like, this was the deciding factor in my, yep. And she's shaking her head no, so.
Okay, yeah. I think that would be a helpful question to help possibly surround a student with some resources that may change their trajectory after high school.
And to your mid, to your mid-process, I, I do think, and I don't know that we've thought all the way through this, so it would have to be something that I'm, I'm saying with an asterisk as we would dig. But there may be some possibility that we could do some cross-referencing with the questions that present in panorama, and which of those may align. At least kind of we could crosswalk them to some of these and at least do some analysis that way. We'd have to see, it may not work, but we'd have to see what that looked like.
I think that'd be good. Yep. Thank you.
Good questions there. Does anybody else have any other questions or discussion on this presentation? Okay. Dr. Berger, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Well, unless I am mistaken, and somebody can correct me if I am, that does conclude our work session, and we will be back in 26 or 7 minutes for the regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.